If you are here tonight, would like to talk to council, please talk to staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to city council. We have a three-minute light system. After saying your name and address, you will see a green light appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. At this time, please silence your phones. And prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Natalie Chamberlain with Hilton Christian Center provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is our practice to stand for the invocation and pledge. Those who are also wish to stand are welcome. Thank you.
I invite everyone to be in an attitude of prayer in keeping with your tradition. Oh Holy One, today this body is taking time to honor the helpers among us. Those providing emergency medical services, those who are part of our Public Works Department, those who participated in the Great American Cleanup. We would ask your blessing on these and all who are the helpers, the ones who work outside of the spotlight of public office but serve the public good nonetheless. Help these public servants keep the helpers in mind as they are called to make decisions on some of the mundane things of ongoing business. Grant them wisdom as they are called upon to make decisions on a wide range of items that require financial savvy. They include issues of property taxes and budget, zoning, conditional use permits, city employees, code amendments, and easements. This business and its results touch all the citizens of this city. Keep us mindful that the mundane may be life-altering. Please grant that the members of this council will have ears to hear all the sides of issues presented. Help them to be especially aware of those affected by their decisions but who are not able to make their voices heard here tonight. Grant them the wisdom to represent the greater good of the whole community and not just those with money and voice to make their case. Grant them eyes to see the hidden needs these issues may raise and grant them hearts that break at the human needs these issues address. By your grace, grant them courage to work for a city that is just and habitable for all of her citizens. And grant them a sound night's rest after they have transacted the business tonight. Let it be a rest of those who do the work of justice. Amen.
Do y'all follow me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to have three presentations. At this time, will Chief Wesley Rogers, Deputy Chief Stafford, and Captain Dorsey please join city council at the podium? So city council, we're all going to come and do these three as well. So at this time, can we have Mr. Frank James, Matthew Darden, Robert McCarthy, Rodney Hall, Kenny Petgrave, and Sonia Clark please join us here at the podium? What's up? What's up? You guys good? So at this time, our second proclamation, we want to present you on behalf of city council with National Public Works Week. And I'm going to read this just a little bit. So our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable communities and public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of Newport News. And whereas this year marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas the theme is people, purpose, and presence, now therefore, we declare this week as National Public Works Week. And really just want to say thank you so much. We really do appreciate you guys. Frank is standing here at the podium for number three. So today, we are presenting our championship belts for the 2025 Great American Cleanup Department Challenge Winners. This is a time-honored event that showcases the strength of our spirit and commitment to a cleaner, healthier environment. We started this six years ago and have seen great progress. This year, nine departments participated with a total of over 250 volunteers working hard to make a difference. Together, they collected 918 bags of litter, the equivalent of 30 gallons each. So drumroll, please. All right, this year's winners, large department is Parks and Recs. You gotta come get the belt. It's kind of heavy. It's a little heavy. It's your belt. You gotta come to the middle for the photo.
Michael, this is like...
I know, I know.
And despite what the other directors say, there are no recounts.
Tina, come here. How's that? Congrats. And it says small department winner, but we'll say small but mighty department winner, Finance Department. Come on, Virginia, yeah. It's heavy. It's pretty heavy. Congratulations. And that's the last one. Thanks, all. So before we actually get started on the public hearings, you probably noticed that our fearless city manager, Alan Archer, is not here. There was a death in the family, so if we could have a moment of silence for Alan and his entire family at this time, please. Thank you so much. And we miss you, Alan, and we'll see you at the funeral tomorrow. Public hearings, page four, item E1 is a request for city council to receive public comments on the effective real property tax rate as it relates to the recommended fiscal year 2026 operating budget. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Is it moved and seconded? Any discussion? So at this time, we're going to open the vote.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. So now we're going to move to E2 because it is a... Yeah, so and also before we move, we are just going to read the legal disclaimers. Is that good, Bob?
You can do that now or you can do it for G1.
Okay, why don't we just knock it out right now? Okay, so I'll start first and then we'll go to the right of me. So I, Philip Jones, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the operating budget as my wife is an employee of Riverside Healthcare. However, I am not disqualified participating in this transaction. I have my signed declaration on file with the city clerk. We'll go to... Whoever's next.
Okay. I, Clay and I'm Long, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2026 operating budget as my wife is an employee of Newport News Public Schools. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
Thank you.
I, John R. Ely III, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY 2026 operating budget as I received a salary from the West Next for success foundation, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I'm not disqualified for participating in this transaction. My signed written declarations were filed with the city clerk.
Vice.
I, Curtis D. Bethany III, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY 2026 operating budget as I am an employee of Ferguson Enterprises, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
Councilman Coleman.
I, Robert S. Coleman, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY 2026 operating budget as I am an employee of the Boys and Girls Club of the Virginia Peninsula, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I'm not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
Councilman Harris.
I, Marcellus L. Harris III, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY 2026 operating budget as my wife is a member of the Newport News School Board and I am an employee of the Bethay Family Foundation, both of which may be affected by the transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
Okay, I think we're good, Bob.
We're good, sir.
Perfect. Let's move to item E2. Request adopting ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager executed deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News and Loomis Networks, doing business as Seagra, for the maintenance, installation, operation, and removal of fiber optic cable across and under a portion of 100 City Farm Road. At this time, we have no speakers. Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion adopt the ordinance.
Move adopt. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page 17, minutes of the work session of April 22nd. Page 72, minutes of the regular meeting, April 22nd. Page 91, resolution consenting to the appointment of Wesley A. Rogers, Fire Chief, as coordinator of EM. Motion to approve consent agenda. Item F1 through F3, all-inclusive.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page 93, item G1-1, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next nine agenda items address the adoption of the FY 2025 operating budget as each item mandates individual consideration. I will present them sequentially and ask for the council's action on each. Item G1-1 is an ordinance to reordain Chapter 40, taxation of the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article 2, Real Estate Taxes, Division 1, Generally, Section 40-12, levied amount.
Are there any speakers? I see we have none.
No.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item G1-2, Mr. Manager.
Item G1-2 is an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 40, taxation of the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article 12, tangible personal property taxes, Division 2, tax levy and rates, Section 40-223.3, mobile home tax levied amount, and Section 40-220.5, tax on personal property of public service corporations, levied amount.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item G1-3, Mr. Manager.
Item G1-3 is an ordinance to reordain Chapter 40, taxation of the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article 2, Real Estate Taxes, Division 3, deferral for elderly and disabled persons, exemption for qualifying elderly persons, Section 40-52.2, general prerequisites to grant of tax exemption, effective residency in hospital, nursing home, etc., proration.
I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item G1-4, Mr. Manager.
Item G1-4 is an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 42, Water Supply of the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article 3, Water Rates and Fees, Section 42-33, Rates and Fees.
I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? At this time, call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G1-5, Mr. Manager.
Item G1-5 is an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 33, Sewers and Sewage Disposal of the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article 2, Connections to Public Sewer, Section 33-19, Charges.
We have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item G1-6, Mr. Manager.
Item G1-6 is a resolution to amend the policy regarding sewage collection systems for the City of Newport News, Virginia.
Okay. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G1-7, Mr. Manager.
Item G1-7 is an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 38, Streets and Sidewalks, the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article 2, Work Own, Over, Under, or Affecting Streets, Division 2, Permit Generally, Section 38-49, Application, Section 38-50, Issuance and Term Generally, Section 38-51, Liability Insurance and Bond or Letter of Credit Prerequisite to Issuance of Permit, Division 3, Permit Inspection and Guarantee Fees, Section 38.67, Schedule, Section 38-68, Amount of Inspection Fees, and Section 38-69, Payment Before Issuance of Permit Exception.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G1-8, Mr. Manager.
Item G1-8 is an ordinance providing for the adoption of a classification and pay plan for the employees of the City of Newport News.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G1-9, Mr. Manager.
An item G1-9 is an ordinance to approve the budget and appropriate funds to operate the City of Newport News for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, inclusive.
No speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? At this time, please call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. At this time, before we go to item G2, I'll turn it over to city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Before we move forward, on behalf of the city manager, Alan Archer, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the individuals whose hard work and dedication made this budget possible. First, our sincere appreciation goes to Lisa Cipriano, Corey Cloud, and the entire Budget Department. Their work developing recommendations, analyzing data, responding to public input, and coordinating across departments has ensured a thoughtful and strategic financial plan for the year ahead. I also want to thank the Communications Department for all their efforts in broadening our public engagement this year. Through their leadership, we hosted our first-ever virtual town hall, allowing more residents than ever to participate in the budget process. And to all the directors and the staff who contributed to this year's budget, thank you for your professionalism, your responsiveness, and commitment to serving our community. Item G2.
I think it deserves a round of applause. And the budget will start at the next council in like two months. Yeah, two months, we'll start it again. Page 155, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution approving a capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2030 for the City of Newport News, Virginia. By ordinance, the city manager is required to provide an updated capital improvement plan to city council no later than November 1st of each year. The FY 2026 CIP was initially transmitted to city council on October 18th, 2024, with a revised plan presented at the April 22nd, 2025 city council work session. Included in this agenda is a summary of the five-year, $1 billion, $97 million financial plan, along with a list of projects by category. Total general fund-supported spending of $710,500,000 is funded from general obligation bonds of $483,600,000, cash capital of $128,800,000, and grant funding of $98,200,000. Key FY 2026 projects include renovations to Warwick High School, development of Seafood Industrial Park, continued investment in the Choice Neighborhood, and Safe Haven Empowerment Center, and citywide athletic field lighting upgrades. The plan also supports city building maintenance, street improvements, and major sustainability initiatives for waterworks, stormwater, and wastewater systems, and I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 174, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 2-133 of the City Code to align with updates to the Code of Virginia 44-93, increasing paid military leave for employees of political subdivisions from 15 to 21 workdays per federal fiscal year, and providing up to 388 work hours of paid leave for professional firefighters on federally funded active duty. I recommend approval.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request to approve a resolution to adopt the citywide safety action plan developed through a Federal Highway Administration Safe Streets For All grant. The plan uses a data-driven, equitable, safe system approach to reduce traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries in Newport News with the goal of a 50% reduction by 2046. It will guide project prioritization and future grant applications, and I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, item G five, Mr. Manager.
Item G five is a request to approve a resolution approving and adopting a revised flood assistance program policy and authorizing the City Manager to make an application for flood mitigation assistance or other grants. The update clarifies eligibility criteria for property acquisition in the one-hundred-year flood plane, reflecting updated and elevation standards and supporting the city's long-term flood mitigation and resilience goals. I recommend approval.
At this time, I see we have no speakers, motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item G six, Mr. Manager.
Item G six is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the lease of parcel one A in the Seafood Industrial Park to the Newport News Economic Development Authority. The lease will support the upcoming seafood market project with EDA facilitating a sublease to Lucky Dog Crab and Seafood Company. The lease term is twenty years with one twenty-year renewal option, and I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? At this time, please call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, for G seven, I have a personal interest. I will be abstaining, turning it over to the Vice Mayor at this time.
All right. Page three eighteen, item G seven, Mr. Manager. Item G seven is a request to approve the purchase of a four-point-seven-nine acre property at Cannon Boulevard, including a six-story, one hundred eleven thousand, two hundred twenty-four square foot building from Hampton University for nine million, five hundred thousand dollars. This acquisition will support the city's facility needs and public access strategy, centralizing city functions while providing an ownership stake in the city center. It will also allow the city to evaluate opportunities for larger-scale improvements at existing facilities, and I recommend approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Please open, please call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Abstaining.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero with one extension.
Thank you, page three twenty-two, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
There's one appropriation this evening. Item H one is a request to approve a resolution appropriating fifteen thousand dollars from the Commonwealth's Attorney Asset Forfeiture Fund. These funds will support initiatives by the Victim Services Unit and the Community Outreach and Education Coordinator, including community events, school programs, and staff training. The funds come from the Department, Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, allocated from narcotics-related asset forfeiture cases. I recommend approval of the appropriation.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve item H one.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, item I, citizen comments, I will call each name in the order appears in front of me. Vicki Freeman, then Mendel Service.
Good evening.
Good evening, yeah, you can, it's a flexi mic.
Got moved around a lot earlier. Good evening, Vicki Seokis Freeman, one hundred Nat Turner Boulevard, Newport News, Virginia is my address. Newport News is thriving. We are a fortunate community to have a city council that supports responsible growth and development. Specifically, I'm here to speak about the three interstate interchanges that play a role in the success and infrastructure growth of the city, and that I'm here to comment about three developments and the direct path of those locations that require off-site improvements. I sixty-four at Jefferson Avenue for Ferguson and Costco, I sixty-four at Denby Boulevard for Chick-fil-A, Wawa, and SKS, who I'm here to represent this evening, and I sixty-four at Yorktown Road for the NU Development and the EDA. Great cities function as an ecosystem that have small, medium, and large contributors that bring diversity and foster a spectrum of opportunity. The contributors should all matter, as none are successful without the other, meaning none should have more importance than the other, just like the city council seats. Each of you has a vote to ensure fairness and balance to the important decision-making that the city, that guides the city. I am looking for that equality for my family's development. Council has agreed to support off-site improvements for both Costco and the NU Developments, both multi-billion-dollar companies that are not based here in Newport News. However, we were told during our lengthy development process that no assistance was available from the city for our off-site improvements. So I'm confused by the recent financial support for the two other developers that are in very similar situations but receiving financial support for their off-site improvements. We are local, small, and family-owned. SKS has no corporate stock like Costco, which is trading for about a thousand dollars a share. We've been in this community, all three districts, at one time or another for six decades, and unlike others, we are not threatening to leave. My comment is, please be fair with the development support process. If you support them, the large, please support us, the small, and the local, equally. I know this may not apply in every situation, and will need some support from the city attorney to advise on what would be necessary, perhaps a conversation with the city manager and the staff to advise city council. My request is to have city council consider the support of our off-site improvements, which are underway at the project. The kicker here is that while working with the EDA and the Enterprise Zone staff, it was made clear that our off-site improvements, and any off-site improvements, are not applicable to any tax credit incentives as the improvements are outside of our property lines. They are ours to use, but your city's streets and the intersection and the traffic signals. A third of my construction budget is spent on off-site improvements for this. Please consider my family's support. And I'll just say on a personal note.
You can, yes.
Thank you. When the city chaplains need support for local children and families in the community, they're not calling the president of Costco or D.R. Horton. They're picking up the phone and they're calling people like me to support, and I'm happy to do it. And I loved that the food truck crew was filming in Newport News just a few weeks ago, and I was like, hey, no one's saying, let's go film in the parking lot of Costco. It was recommended that they go film at two fabulous iconic locations in Newport News. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm the EDA rep, so I'll be, I'll be talking to you. We'll talk afterwards.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mendel Service, and then Erin Easter.
Hi, good evening.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good.
Me too, but the clock's not gone, it's zero, zero, zero.
Oh, I can't even see the clock, so you're, yeah, I have no idea.
Now it's three, so I can start. Hello, my name's Mendel Service, and I've been attending these meetings over the years and meeting individually with some of the representatives that I see in front of me. My concern is, there hasn't been a shift in recognizing the urgency in terms of the unhoused and the homeless, and there's not enough transparency for those of us who are dealing with it. I'm in the corridor, I live off of Warwick Boulevard, which means when I get on the bus, I have to encounter people who are homeless. During the winter, Port has a program where they let people out at four-thirty in the morning, the coldest time of night. That's when my legs start to cramp when I'm in my home. So I can imagine all the elderly, the people with disabilities, the people with children, the people that are single on the streets at four-thirty in the morning with nowhere to go and nothing opening up until later on. And I've gone to the meetings where we've had about the study, but the only progress I've seen is a sign saying, no trespassing, no tents allowed. And I feel there needs to be a movement towards incorporating those of us who are dealing with it on a pivotal level. That includes the libraries where the people with nowhere to go hang out all day, the buses where the people with nowhere to go ride up and down all day. Public housing, where it's difficult to get a place if you don't have the right criteria, meaning you have to have children and all sorts of things with section eight. I'm trying to condense it. But I want to show that when we talk about having a permanent shelter, I know Newport News isn't the sort of city where you can really see the homeless, so out of sight, out of mind, but people suffer. And with the crisis, with prices going up, with food, and all different things, we need more compassion and more action and to be more collaborative. You see me, I don't have a walker, I don't have my cane, because I've been given the opportunity through physical therapy and people that actually give me the skills and care so that I can improve. And when you do physical therapy, it's small incremental actions, but they have to be specific, and you build on them. It's not enough to have task force, it's not enough to have discussions. There needs to be more action and compassion, because if somebody like myself, after twenty years of using a walker and a cane, and believe me, physical therapy is hell when I'm doing it for my knees, because you do it for your hands and it's small muscles, you do it for your shoulder, it's small muscles, you do it for your knees and you say, oh my God, my thighs are so heavy. But progress has to take smaller steps to move to big results. And I'm, I'm just asking you to be more proactive, even if you're not affected by it personally, because many of us are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Erin Easter, and then Carol Carke, and then Kelly Fox.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Erin Easter, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the group Virginia Organizing. We've spoken here many times to call on City Council to do more to address the issue of homelessness in the city, specifically for them to contribute towards the establishment of a regional homeless shelter. We were told that further action would be determined after the completion of the city's housing study. However, it was originally scheduled to be released at the beginning of this year, and is now almost halfway through May, and the details around it are still unclear. So tonight, I am asking City Council for transparency on the status of the study and on your plans for making the results of the study available to the public. You've also sent out a FOIA request to Ms. Seeley with Mayor Jones and Councilman Long on CC to request information about this. So to address the concerns of your constituents regarding the issues of housing and homelessness is, I believe is necessary to be more open with this going forward.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Carke, and I live at 197 Revel Drive in Newport News, 23608. I came to share with you that I oppose Costco moving to the intersection of Bland and Jefferson, mainly for safety purposes of an already very busy intersection, which is also the main entry to the Newport News Williamsburg Airport and also a way into the Mary Immaculate Hospital. Ferguson would tear down a very nice building that is not a new building. It takes a lot of that property. There are many other larger sites within the area that has a large parking lot, which Costco seems to want, and one of those sites is the old Kmart area on Warwick and Oriana, which has a large parking lot. I ask you to please look around. That intersection is terribly busy already. I'm very familiar with it. I was surprised when the paper printed that that facility has not been used for two years. I guess during COVID, they found other ways of not using the facility. But I do ask you to give strong consideration to not use that intersection for Costco. There's other places. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Kelly Fox.
Hi.
Good evening.
Kelly Fox, 29 Marina, Newport News. You'll figure it out. I'm interested in knowing what's going on with the housing development that is at the corner of Industrial Parkway and Warwick, that has had homes on it. It's right before a racetrack gas station. It's got homes, it's got a bulldozer in the way of the driveway. My family's moved away to Alaska and come back, and it's still empty. Figuring it out. My second is also opposition for Costco, concerned about safety, another source for another gas stations and so on. I'm sure somebody's going to do the evaluation for safety, but another large gas station area right near the airport. We've already got Fleet, we've already got, could this really make sense? Has anybody considered the parking over behind Zaxby's that's behind Costco's? That's a parking lot that is completely empty all the time. Maybe Costco can put in another entrance and keep their same place. Just seems like a crazy place to add more traffic to Bland and Jefferson when we don't have a freeway there, and there's no proposed freeway going there, unlike Oyster Point that has a freeway there, but Denby doesn't get to count for Bland when we do get Denby, because we're counting on it. But Denby doesn't get to count for Bland, and y'all have been on Jefferson, even the police officers avoid Jefferson because of the traffic. That's got to say something. Anyway, thank you for everything you do.
Thanks, ma'am. And before we go to new business, I want to have a time for Councilman Long to address the homelessness study. I know there's been some updates on that, so could you speak to that, Councilman Long?
Yeah, so I will say first, Virginia Housing, thanks for your activism to, you know, pushing this cause. The housing study, the homeless study, the regional homeless study is complete, and it will be available. I have to defer to the city manager on how that's going to become available for public to review. What I will say is, the study is a regional study, and I think they did a great job on looking at long-term sustainability, long-term self-sufficiency for those that find themselves unhoused. It helps break down some of the stigma that people may have on how people become unhoused. It gives the region a guidebook on who and how to effectively provide support. But I think, most importantly, it steps us through the process of how you move from being unhoused all the way to long-term self-sufficiency. So the report is out there now. I would encourage you and other groups to look at it. It will be public on the city's website.
Tonight, we posted online tonight.
We posted online tonight.
Online tonight. Do you have exactly the website? It's going to be on, is it Human Services Department?
I did, it's on the Department of Human Services website. I didn't come in to the housing, the homeless issues.
Okay, so we'll send that out in the newsletter, and then it's also, we'll, comms will link it on the top page. It'll be out tonight, for those who've been asking. Thank you to Ginger and Beau and everyone involved in that. Councilman Long, are you?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Our next item will be new business. We'll go in order. Mr. Manager.
Yes, I'd just like to take a moment to extend a heartfelt condolences to the city manager, Alan Archer, on the passing of his father, Dr. Beverly B. Archer, passed away on Wednesday, May the 7th. Our thoughts and prayers are with Alan and his family during this difficult time, and we hope that they can find the comfort and the cherished memories of his father and the influence on his remarkable life. I'd also like to say thank you and acknowledge city manager Archer, who had the vision for a new budget process this year. Very, very thankful that that was complete this evening, and once again, thank the Budget Department and the entire staff for their work throughout this year's budget process. We're very proud of this. This was a truly a budget of first. It was the first time that we built a budget that clearly aligns with our key performance indicators, directly tying resources to results. We captured and elevated high-level priorities that reflect both operational needs and long-term strategic goals. There was a significant and deliberate effort to engage the community, not only to inform, but to listen. We launched our first-ever citizen pulse, citizen budget pulse survey, helping us better understand the resident satisfaction with city services and where we need to improve. These milestones set a new standard for how we plan, communicate, and stay accountable to the people we serve. So we're very proud of the process that we had this year.
Thank you.
That's all.
City Attorney.
I'll just send love and support to Alan and his family in this time, and congratulate Beau on pinch hitting on a pretty heavy agenda and doing a pretty good job.
Thanks, sir. City Clerk.
Yes, sir, I also like to extend condolences to our city manager and his family on the loss of his father.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Long.
I also want to extend my condolences to Alan and his family for the loss of the father, of his father. Beau already said it pretty well, thanks to the budget staff for developing a great budget that incorporates and prioritizes some of our citizens' concerns. I really do appreciate your hard work and work towards it. Great, efficient process. I want to thank Parks and Rec, they were here earlier. It was a wonderful Children's Festival. Went out there with my daughter, and we had a great time. She didn't want to leave at all. We spent a lot of time in the bounce house areas, and so it was a great festival. That was my first time attending that festival, and it was a lot of kids, easily 700 kids out there in that area, and everyone was having a great time. So really do appreciate the Parks and Rec for hosting that Children's Festival. Two upcoming events I plan on going to. The first one, I'll say it's the Newport News Golf Senior Amateur Golf Classic that's held here at our golf course here in around Fort Eustis area. That'll be on May 21st. I'm not going as a participant, obviously, but I will be there in support. I was able to visit the golf committee a few months ago, and they, it told me about their classic. So I said I would at least come and see how this classic is held. And the last is the Bacon Bash will be held, and still tickets available, May 22nd. Warwick, it's City Center Rotary Club is hosting it from 6:00 to 9:00. They are tickets still available, so hopefully you'll get a chance. This is the 11th event, and I've attended at least eight and nine of them. Always have a great time, so if you're available to participate, please do. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, my condolences to Alan and his family on the passing of his father. I know that Alan and his father had a very strong and long connection, and like I said, heartfelt condolences to him. Also want to give a happy belated Mother's Day to all of our mothers. I hope you enjoy the weekend, and we appreciate everything that you do for us. You do make the world go round. Parks and Rec, thank you so much for a wonderful Children's Festival, another great job. I think we have probably the best Parks and Rec department, I mean, not only here in Hampton Rose, but I think in the Commonwealth, so thank you for keeping up the great work and providing a great experience for all of our children. And then, last but not least, I want to comment on the budget process. Kudos to everyone involved, Lisa and her team, and all of the directors. I know this is a true team effort. Also want to acknowledge my colleagues here on council as well for the way that we all work and collaborated on that, and I always want to thank you, thank the team, want to thank Alan and the manager's office and everyone else for listening to us. I know sometimes it feels like you're drinking out of a fire hydrant when you're talking to us, but we appreciate your patience and grace, and I think that this budget does reflect the priorities not of this, not only of this council, but of this community. And when we're talking about public safety, we're talking about schools, we're talking about economic development, we're talking about affordable housing. I think we touched on a lot of those issues, most, all of those issues in this current budget, and I'm looking forward to upcoming budgets. I know the mayor has made a directive of council, I mean, of the manager's office and the team looking next year about some cost savings, looking to see what we can do to trim down just a little bit, but not sacrifice quality of life and taking care of those priorities that we need to take care of, that our citizens are expecting. So once again, thank you so much, team. Appreciate everything you do.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Vick.
Yes, I definitely want to thank Lisa Cipriani and her entire team and all of the, all of the staff for working so hard, as usual, for our budget. It was a lot this year, just trying to look at what we can change and what we can add to really help make citizens' lives better. And as I talk about that, as we're, as some of you have spoken about the homeless situation here in Newport News, or maybe even as you're talking about even in the region, I do want to make sure you are aware of the Four Oaks Center that we do have, where people, if they are looking for direction to, for housing, that place is open. I think it's usually around 8:00 or 9:00 to 5:00 during the day, and we have people in-house. I know Human Services is there, Ginger is always a part of it, but people in-house who can really guide you to be able to help change your situation, and I just wanted to remind all the citizens of that, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Neely.
I would like to give my heartfelt condolences to Alan Archer, his family. My prayers are with you through this time of need. I also like to thank the Budget Department for amazing budget. I know it was challenging, but we got through it. Special thanks to the mayor and the vice mayor for leading up efforts, making sure of what the city council voice was heard in this process to make sure our needs were met as well. Also like to thank Parks and Recreation again and Communications. Work with them on the June Teen Fest was been amazing to make things happen. Also like to thank Ginger and Beau for their expertise in making sure this, everything was smooth. Also like to take this time to thank my CSR, G. Ely. I know I'm very hard to work, work with, but he deals with me. Soon as he get off in the morning at 8:00, soon as I hear the door shut, I have a list of stuff that needs to be done, so I appreciate you because you haven't even slept yet. So thank you for all you do for the city of Newport News, all you do with your partnerships with the different departments, and I really appreciate all that you do. And that's about it. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Harris.
All right, yes, and thank you for everyone who was, came out on tonight and shared with us and being a part of the process. I do also want to continue to lift up in prayer Mr. Archer, his family during this time of bereavement, and as we send our condolences to him and his family as they celebrate his father's life on tomorrow. Also to echo my colleagues here, thank you for all the hard work that was put in for the budget process, late nights, early mornings, calls, meetings. I know it was a lot, but y'all always doing outstanding job, and I would say this was one of the smoother processes throughout the course of my tenure being on council, so I appreciate everything that y'all did to make sure we were able to get to tonight. Also, I want to extend my thanks to a Mr. Amir Langley, who happened to be one of my former students, who's graduated from Denby High School in 2018 or 17, one of those years. And then to Mr. Thomas Kirby. They facilitate the program over at Brooks Crossing through the Newport News Youth Build program, and on Friday, they were able to celebrate 11 individuals that completed the program, graduated with their GED. I was able to hang out with them for a little while on Friday, but to see the excitement that they had to complete the GED program and get their degree, diploma, it was a very exciting time, because these were individuals that didn't go through the traditional route of schooling, but was able to stick with it despite the challenges, circumstances that they faced that kind of knocked them off track a little bit, but they were able to get back in the right lane and complete the Youth Build program. The Youth Build program is doing great work for individuals who the traditional setting doesn't always work for them, and they were able to help these 11 individuals make it to the finish line. Now they're able to go on and transition to their next step, because what we wanted them to be, to look at either be degree, licensed, or certified, and now with them being able to complete their GED, they're able to move on to help herd that word, self-sufficient. They're able to now work towards establishing a self-sufficient lifestyle because they completed this program. So thank you to Amir Langley and Thomas Kirby for the work you're doing over through the Youth Build program, and that's all I have, Amir. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I too want to extend my heartfelt condolences to our city manager, Mr. Alan Archer. Alan has a true love and passion for this city, and every time I catch Alan on a late night, he's just always working, so I bet you he's watching this right now. And so, Alan, we appreciate you, we love you, man, and see you soon. I also want to share the same sentiments in regards to budget. My budget folks, who are doing a phenomenal job, per usual, congratulations on another successful budget. This has been definitely a great, smooth process, and we're always going to continue to improve that process, and so just want to say thank you and being grateful for all of you. Next thing I'll mention is, we have quite a few graduations that just happened and some that are still going on. So for you that are family, that have members in your family that graduated, congratulations to you and your families. I think seeing you is coming up next, so just want to offer early congratulations to all of you. And then the last thing, of course, it is, it's a little windy and rainy out there, so please, everybody be safe on your travels home. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll be brief tonight. First of all, just thank you to Gloria, to Lisa, the entire budget team. Just to recap for city council, and Councilman Coleman, who I value your opinion a lot, it's a 7-0 vote on a budget, it's a 7-0 vote on a CIP. We finished this thing three weeks ago, and even though I sent Lisa emails at midnight to changing this or this, I mean, the fact that we worked so well as a team, so thank you to the staff, but also council. Like I said before, it really is like, it's us against the world, so I really appreciate all of you and all the work that we've done. It's, it's been, it's been really, really good. Second thing is, obviously the most important is just Alan. Alan, we love you. I know, I told you not to watch, you're probably watching it, but someone, someone asked me a few months ago, like, how would you describe the different people in the city leadership and city hall? And I said, city council is an animal, you know, you try to wrangle everyone together, but I said, like, Alan is sort of like that, that beating heart that's very deliberate and very deliberate and methodical, but Alan is the heart of this thing. So Alan, we, we love you, and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow and supporting you as you go through this, this rough time. 7-0 vote, council, we appreciate it. Let's do it again next year. We stand adjourned.